I might call this meeting of your Newark City Council order. Autumn, please call the roll.
Mr. Lang, Mr. Marmee.
President.
Mr. Rath.
Here.
Mr. Blake, Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Cost.
Here.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Mr. Fraser.
Here.
Ms. Hall and Mr. LaBute.
Here.
Seven here or present this evening. Next you can join us, Mr. LaBute in the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand. Is that what's right?
Heavenly Father, as we come to your prayer this evening, we thank you for the beautiful day that you've given us and the beautiful weekend and the opportunity to serve you as we're here. I just ask you to be with us this evening, be in our discussions, be with those also who could not be here this evening. I ask that you be with each of them as they are in various areas and cannot be here. Be at our discussions and help us to have the vision and will of your will for this city. These things I ask in Jesus' name.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's the time for council to discuss anything pertaining to the agenda. Do we have anything?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cost.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse council members Blake, Hall and Lang.
Motion to excuse.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marmee. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close sign is aye. That passes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I will be abstaining from ordinance 18-14 this evening regarding the vote and discussion.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Next, we have the minutes of our July 16, 2018 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve this?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. LaBute.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cost. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. That passes. Next, we have three reports of standing committees this evening. One from finance, one from service, and one from safety. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Under reports from city officials, we have one from Barb Joes, our city income tax administrator, the income tax revenue report for the period ending July 15, 2018. Without objection, that will be received and filed. Next, under communications, we have communication from Roger Loomis, our water administrator. Basically leans on past due water and sewer bills. One from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, new applicant for liquor license for Russell's Woodfire LLC at 1450 North 21st Street. And a letter from Tim B. Without objections, those will be received and filed. Next this evening, we have a public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Autumn, would you like to read that?
There is hereby given a notice that the Newark City Council shall take action upon ordinance 18-14 on August 6, 2018. Said ordinance allows the changing of the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 2250 Horns Hill Road, City of Newark, Ohio, Licking County, from that of single-family residence district to PUD, Planned Unit Development District.
This is the public hearing. It's your chance to speak either pro or con. After I close the public hearing, we'll read it a second time and then we'll be voting. So is there anyone who would like to speak on this public hearing, either for or against? One more time. Anyone like to speak for or against? Just raise your hand so I know. Yes, if you'll just give us your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Jeremy King. My address is 316 Welsh Hills Road, Granville, Ohio. However, I'm here representing the Licking Land Trust. I'm vice chair of that board. This is actually not a comment either for or against what's being proposed, but more perhaps a little bit of a heads up in that the Licking Land Trust owns a protective easement on the Hughes property. And it appears from the engineer's office drawings and what has been planned that there will be a sewer extension that would go through the southern edge of the Hughes property. And we're not sure that that is allowable under the easement. And that's something that I think people need to be aware of. We're still looking at this and really not knowing. We went to the engineer's office and sort of looked at what was being proposed. And it's just unclear to us in the current state of things whether that would present a problem. And that we would ask that council take that into consideration because I don't think anybody wants to have any sort of legal battle over something like this. The land trust is not an objection to development in that particular area at all. We just want to make sure that the terms of the easement are not being violated. Thank you for your time.
Would anyone else like to speak? For or against? One more time. Anyone else for or against? Yes, sir.
If I could just address his concern. Ryan Badger with ADR and Associates, 88 West Church Street. Just to address what you're looking at, where it was a very early drawing. We've since removed those utilities. Those utility items haven't been worked out yet. So and we would obviously look into easement regulations and make sure we're not in violation.
Did you say some of that again?
I'm sorry.
This way?
Sure. Yeah, we haven't really designed the utilities yet. An early drawing, we had some conceptual layouts of utility for water and sewer. Since then, we've removed those utilities because those are more of an engineering item, not the actual zoning that we're asking for change. So those items are going to be worked out later. Any easements or any restrictions for having utility in a certain area will definitely work within those restraints.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Autumn, would you read 18-14 for a second time?
Ordinance 18-14 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee and Mr. Fraser. An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 2250 Horns Hill Road, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of single-family residence zoning district to planned unit development zoning district.
This has been to the planning commission and been approved by the planning commission. So you've heard the second reading of 18-14. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 18-14.
Motion stopped by Mr. Rath, second by Mr. Fraser. Mr. Marmee. Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Is there any discussion on 18-14? Again, Mr. Bub is abstaining. Anyone else? Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Lang, Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake, Mr. Bub.
Abstain.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Fraser.
Yes.
Ms. Hall and Mr. LaBute.
Yes.
18-14 passes six with one abstention.
Yes.
Takes six votes to pass. It would take seven to overturn the planning commission. So it's passed. Thank you. Next, we have comments from citizens. There are two sections from comments from citizens. One is now and one is after the legislation. This is not a debate with council. This is just your opportunity to be heard. Is there anyone who would like to speak this first section of citizens' comments? If anyone else would like to speak during this, kind of raise your hands so all know. Okay, thank you. Give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Dawn Lyons. I live at 88 Grant Street, Newark. I've lived here 50 years. I've worked hard all my life. I'm retired. I've been for 23 years. I've got a three-month-old Mountain Curve pup out of premium stock. I paid a lot of money for it. I was walking that pup in my alley behind my house Saturday evening. Two pit bulls come out of the yard for four houses from my house. I own four houses in this neighborhood. And I've lived in my own house 50 years. Soon as the pit bulls hit the alley, I jerked my pup and held it high over my head. And the pit bulls was snoring and attacking my pup. They didn't bother me. But they got hurt by the hip. And I pulled a 25-odd out of my pocket. I have a concealed carry permit. And I shot one of them dogs. Didn't kill it. It went around to the front of the house from the back alley, around the block, bleeding all the way, bleeding bad all the way. I went on home and called the police. The police came. One cruiser headed east on Grant Street and stopped. Another cruiser headed west on Grant Street and stopped. And the city dog warden got between the two and they visited for a half hour. I don't know what they was visiting about. But none of them ever asked to see my dog that was injured. And I went down this morning and got a police report. I think the dog catcher made about a three-word report. They've never asked to see my dog. They don't care about my dog. They don't care about me. And it's been that way ever since I've lived at that address. I feel that I'm short-changed. I've paid taxes on four houses for 50 years. And it's terrible the way that Newark Police Department treats me. I'm not a lowlife. I've paid my taxes. I've paid my dues. And they all stick together, time after time, over the last 50 years. They stick together and cover their asks. That's my opinion. Thank you for listening to us.
Can I ask one question? Were the dogs taken? You have the two dogs?
No, no. I went to the county dog warden this morning. It was very important to this city dog warden that my pup be licensed. She's three months old. I put an 11-year-old Mountain Curve down two weeks ago, blow her brains out, and she buried in my yard. And I wouldn't have taken $50,000 for that dog. But I replaced her because she was sick with this little pup. I've got a lot of money in this little pup. But I went to the county dog warden this morning, bought a license for her, no problem, went to the police station and got a report. And I think if I'm not mistaken, the report the dog warden made was about three words. He don't care. They stood out there and visited, laughed and talked, and they don't care. Now, they gut me so instead of carrying a .40 caliber Smith &amp; Wesson, I'll carry a 12-gauge shotgun loaded full of sludge. And I guarantee you, the dog will stay when I put him down. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else for this section of citizens' comment? Raise your hand.
Good evening. My name is Rita Shell, and I reside at 52 Columbia Street. I'm a registered voter and I'm a homeowner. And I read the NERC advocate that was July 29 on a Sunday of 2018. And the title was St. Vincent Could Lose Funds Because of Alleged Discrimination. I've been, I was born in NERC. I've been in NERC all my life. And I was very upset and very concerned about the article because we have a need for many homeless people in this community. And there are a lot of organizations in this town that support what is going on. But I also believe that us as citizens and council people should be aware of this article. Is there anybody in here that did not read the article on Sunday, July 29? Did everybody read it? Mr. Blake, who is the councilman in that area, made a comment that, you know, we had a voting that there in 2016 that there was a Fair Housing Act, but City of Newark doesn't have a fair housing office. I just believe that, I feel that St. Vincent is being discriminated against. And I'm standing up for a citizen in Newark, Ohio, to say it's not right and it's not fair. And I want it to be known from everybody. And yes, I have dispatched for that place in the past for three years. I have volunteered. I have also volunteered for the Seventh Day of Venice Food Pantry for five years in the thrift store. And I went to St. Francis and I graduated from Newark Catholic. So you could say that maybe I am a little bit biased about the St. Vincent de Paul article. But I also feel that I don't think council people should be making comments that make it look like St. Vincent's is in the wrong when it's just an alleged fact. And what's going to happen is these funds have been temporarily suspended. And United Way has to do their job. And I understand that everybody has a job to do and they have to follow the rules. But the thing of it is, is it's just going to hurt the people in our community that are on drugs, addicted, abused and homeless. And just like today, I was down at the hardware store and a man that was mentally challenged and in his mid-60s went in to buy a bike clock and his bicycle was stolen from down there at the hardware store. And I think it's a disgrace that our city has a lot of this stuff going on. And we're not that big of a town. I think that there are areas in this town that need to be designated for the theft and the drug dealing and things and the damaging of property that I've had on my property from people crossing Granville Street and crossing the highway, going through a backyard, going through my yard, breaking down my fence to cut on Columbia Street to go down the alleys. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we're going to go to ordinances on the first reading, 18-19.
Ordinance 18-19 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, Mr. Fraser. It's an ordinance to provide for the issuance of $1,120,000 of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of various street and parking lot improvements, sidewalk construction and lighting improvements and all necessary ordinances thereto and declaring an emergency.
18-19 is on its first reading, but it is an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 18-19.
Motion by Mr. Marmee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fraser. Is there any discussion on 18-19? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Lang, Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake, Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Fraser.
Yes.
Ms. Hall and Mr. LaBute.
Yes.
18-19 passes 7-0. Next on the first reading, we have 18-22.
Ordinance 18-22 by Mr. Lang, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, Mr. Fraser. An ordinance amending Chapter 1870 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Newark, relative to electronic smoking devices within the municipal corporation.
18-22 will be held for two weeks to the second reading to August 20. Next, resolutions on the second reading, 18-55.
Resolution 18-55 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Lang, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath and Mr. Fraser. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 18-55. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 18-55.
Motion by Mr. Marmee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fraser. Is there any discussion on 18-55? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Lang, Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake, Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Fraser.
Yes.
Ms. Hall and Mr. LaBute.
Yes.
18-55 passes 7-0. Next, resolutions on the first reading, 18-56.
Resolution 18-56 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Fraser. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to accept bids and sell certain surplus personal property now owned by the City of Newark, Ohio, and declaring that such property is no longer needed for any municipal purpose and declaring an emergency.
18-56 is on the first reading, but it is an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 18-56.
Motion by Mr. Rath.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 18-56?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath.
There's an emergency clause on this so that we can hit advertising deadlines for the election.
Thank you, Mr. Rath. Anyone else? Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Lang, Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake, Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Fraser.
Yes.
Ms. Hall and Mr. LaBute.
Yes.
18-56 passes 7-0. Next on the first reading, we have 18-57.
Resolution 18-57 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, Mr. Fraser. A resolution authorizing the Mayor of the City of Newark to enter into a community development block grant funded subrecipient agreement with the hereinafter named organizations to carry out activities included within Newark's fiscal year 2018 Community Development Block Grant One-Year Action Plan.
18-57 will be held for two weeks to a second reading to August 20. Next, we have 18-58.
Resolution 18-58 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, Mr. Fraser. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
18-58.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on Resolution 18-58.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fraser, Mr. Marmee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have some things that need to be expedited on this, so we need to waive the two-day reading rule.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Autumn, please call the roll to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Lang, Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake, Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Fraser.
Yes.
Ms. Hall and Mr. LaBute.
Yes.
Two-day reading rule is waived, Mr. Marmee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt 18-58.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fraser. Any other discussion on 18-58? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Lang, Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake, Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Fraser.
Yes.
Ms. Hall and Mr. LaBute.
Yes.
18-58 passes 7-0. Next, we go to 18-61.
Resolution 18-61 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath and Mr. Fraser. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
18-61 will be held for two weeks to August 20. And finally tonight, we have 18-62.
Resolution 18-62 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee and Mr. Fraser. A resolution approving and ratifying an updated solid waste management plan.
18-62 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. And that concludes our legislation tonight. Thank you for your attention. Here's another opportunity for citizens' comments. This is our second one. Again, the same rules apply. This is not a debate with council. This is just your opportunity to be heard. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand and I'll call you up, ma'am. Pick one, one of you two come. Anyone else besides these two?
First of all, I would like to say good evening to everybody. And my question is, why do, I don't mind saying the name, why do we have to say our address because there's some mean people out there? Why is that?
It's just part of the rules.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Because what I see right now, it's a lot of unhappy people. I guess that's the way I can put it.
Would you give me your name and address then before we start?
Yes, my name is Kelly Rucker, and I reside at 130 Delmar Avenue, Newark, Ohio, 43055.
Thank you.
A lot of times, people don't really know who they are talking to. I have talked to people that's running for public service. And you could, you can't imagine just how I was cut down because they didn't know that I knew who they were right in the city of Newark. I'm sitting there talking to them, they just put their little things together and got going. Like I say, we have to be very careful what we say now to the universe. And I see right now that it's, like I said again, it's a lot of unhappy people. I have just as much right as anybody else. And what I'm doing now, I'm quite sure people have heard of the Newark Think Tank on Property. And I'm very proud to be a part of that organization because we deal with addiction, the homeless and the veterans. And 90% of the people that I talk to know someone has overdosed on drugs, dealing with somebody in their family. And we as a community seem like we are just as far east, far east, north is from the south and the south is from the north. I'm looking at, is this what we really about? And one thing I want to get out there is like making America great again. If you are a believer, God is the only one that can make America great again. Every time we put our faith in man, they will disappoint you every time. What are our public service teaching our kids on TV? They're teaching violence and hatred right on TV. And every day we're losing our kids to drugs and violence. Something has to be done. And you say something to somebody, oh, I don't have that in my family. So wait just a minute now. You could have a lot in your family that don't even know anything about it. And like I say, I can't talk about nobody else because I have three daughters and two granddaughters because you never know what they're doing. We have to support these people and love them and give them second chances. I talk to a lot of people every day. And they say, well, I said, do you know who your mayor is? No, I don't know who my mayor is. Do you know who your councilman? No, I don't know that. You have to get out there, just because you have a position, that don't give you no right to talk about nobody, calling them undesirable, calling them homeless. There's a lot of people homeless in the city of Newark. You have to get out there and find these people. Any one of us could be homeless today or tomorrow. This is what we have to think about. Once a person, once a person get in that little comfort zone and get in that bubble where they say, okay, well, I got mine. I'm not thinking about you. Just say it's like cancer. Nobody is concerned about cancer until it hits home. Nobody's concerned about drugs until they hit home. And like, so we have to reach out to these people. They're human beings. It's like anybody, you can get addicted to a prescribed drug. So what I'm looking at, like I said, I'm a part of the Newark Think Tank on Property and I'm very proud to be a part of it. And like I said, we have a lot of homeless children out there. If you stop, look and listen and learn before you proceed to talk about somebody, you could extend your hand to them, talk to them, say, oh, how you doing in school? What's your name? You can reach out to these people. Because if you've got kids, we're not going to be here forever. We have to reach out to these kids whether we like it or not. This millennium, this universe belongs to the millennium whether we like it or not because they're going to a digital world and a modern technology world. What we believe there 10 or 15 years ago, kids are not trying to hear that. They're going to, they're going to go, they're going to be making a decision for us one day and they're going to be taking care of us. And on my journey, as I can see, when people get in that bubble and think they got a little bit of power, they don't have anything to do with you. Like I tell people, power do not last forever. Just like if you've got kids, once some kids leave home, you don't lost that power. So we have to act right and treat people with dignity, pride and respect. And I'm disappointed, I guess I could say I'm disappointed in the way that I see things in the city of Newark going on. Kids afraid to go to school because of all the shooting going on. And I feel that we as citizens and our public service can step up to the, step up and do Like I tell people, power do not last forever. Just like if you've got kids, once some kids leave home, you don't lose that power. So we have to act right and treat people with dignity, pride, and respect. And I'm disappointed, I guess I could say I'm disappointed in the way that I see things in the city of Newark going on. Kids are afraid to go to school because of all the shooting going on. And I feel that we as citizens and our public service can step up and do more than what they're doing. This is only my opinion. When you have an opinion, you make enemies. When you tell the truth, people don't like you. So I've said what I had to say, and I hope some of you all come out and support the Newark Think Tank on Poverty. We're having a barbecue down at, right across from the sheriff's office this coming Saturday.
Hi, my name is Laura Camby, 1120 Winterman Avenue, and I've got something a little different today. I wanted to invite all of you to the Fourth Annual Overdose Awareness Rally. That's going to be the 30th of August, Towneth Canal Marketplace. It's from, it's from 4:00 to 7:00. There are going to be, there's going to be lots of speakers there, and music, and candle lighting, and a balloon release, and I'd like to see some public figures there this year that we haven't seen in the past. So you're all invited. And also, I wanted to address the gazebo again. I'd sure like to see it back down there on the square. Thank you.
It is 30th, 4:00, 7:00?
Yes.
What awareness?
Overdose awareness.
I didn't get the first word. Thank you.
So I guess we're going to go hand in hand tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, any city officials this evening? We have two. Who's going to get there first? This could be a close race.
I just want to let everybody know that we're going to do our third.
Mark Motter.
Mark Motter, City of Newark, Department of Development. Thank you. We're going to do our third cleanup day this year. It's going to be held on Saturday, August the 18th, from 8:00 till noon, and we're going to concentrate on the south part of the city this time. South being defined as south of Walnut Street, north of National Drive, to the east, at the east end of Fleek and Ohio Street, and as far west as the Western Avenue and Sixth Street area. So we've had a lot of success. We're looking forward to doing some more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark Motter. Safety Director Vaughn.
Steve Vaughn, Safety Director, City of Newark. I want to thank Chief Connel and Chief Connor for their outstanding job during the Mike Pence visit last Monday. Things went as smooth as they could have gone. We were well-prepared, and I also want to thank all the surrounding communities and surrounding chiefs that lent us people. They all contributed as much as they could, and we took people from just about everybody. We're going to have promotion at the police department August 13th, and two promotions at the fire department on the 23rd, if any of you can make it. And I'd also like to thank Faith Life Church. They helped clean up fire station number two a couple, three weeks ago, and it looked great, and I'd like to thank them for making us their community service project. Thank you.
Any other administration? Honorable Law Director Sassen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Sassen. Mr. Marmee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Need to call a finance committee meeting. The only thing that, other thing that I want to bring out is, if you didn't see the press release today, there are bricks that are going to be available for veterans. So I think it'd be good if we just passed the word on that. They're only $50. They'll email you an application, and something that I think is good for the veterans that were there born or lived in our community.